Good evening. And we're happy to be back tonight to just get in the workshop and talk about some priority of projects. And if we gave an update a couple of weeks ago, and tonight we want to introduce an interactive spreadsheet that we're going to try and if it doesn't work, Roy's going to juggle the works. So we'll see how that works if our big interactive thing doesn't work. But to get started, our agenda tonight, okay, there you go. Just real quickly, we're going to talk a little bit about our available construction budgets. We briefly touched on that in the last board meeting about maybe determination from the 12 million dollar value of bond, how much is going to be available for construction because that's what Archimedes needs to know so we can start selecting projects and designing to a construction budget, or what we think the contractors' bids will be at the time that the plans are issued. That's the number we're trying to work with the board on allocating out of the 12 million. Then we can prioritize the projects and select some projects tonight hopefully. That's part of our interactive spreadsheet that we'll show you. Put them into categories of immediate work that we can be ongoing to doing now, and then based on the design time and the construction timeframes, short-term and long-term, and what that really means. We kind of touched base on that last time. And I'll talk a little bit, you know, once we do that, about what I see our next steps from a planning and design process, and then a little bit about scheduling timeframe, you know, based on what we did accomplish tonight. Our next task for us will be to, once the board selects the project mix, get our participants lined up from the different schools and people who have participated, members of our steering committee again, how that's going to be formed, so we know as a design for who we're working with, and we have it organized as we move forward based on the project that we're on with. Then setting up meeting schedules, there are some site surveys that we need to take for some of the new construction. That just takes time, it's 30 to 60 days. We want to get bids after the survey, get that worked in, because my company uses that as the basis for accuracy. So we want to get those processes moving along with potentially some sort of testing and sort of the footprints of the new additions. So it's a lot of moving parts, but it all starts tonight, I think, of trying to assimilate a list of where we want to go, because then I can better conduct and continue leadership on how I think we do from that point forward. Okay, Roy? So, last meeting I presented a blank form that I think we handed out, that was our way of tracking the overall cost for the project, for the project, how we're going to spend the 12 million dollars in accounting form work. We've taken liberty since our last meeting to fill in some of those numbers, to give some budget amounts to those numbers. This will be a continual process as we move forward, as new elements come in, as we refine numbers, as we get accurate numbers, we're going to keep updating this because it's important that we track our budgets down below the blue box, which is the construction numbers, so that we're sure that we are not over budget when those bids come in. The elements listed in items B, C, D, and E are real. They're real and will be spending money, it's just that the architect won't be designing those. But we need to keep track, does it come off the 12 million? You see if we start at the bottom of the list. That is, you know, based on confirmation from Doc at the 12 million, that is our overall limit. And I'm just going to kind of move back up the list, and then ultimately we're going to get up to the top number of construction dollars. Our first line item, owner contingency items B through E, we're estimating at this point. So I think it's important to keep a percentage contingency even for these items that are out of construction, because we're going to add a few, we're going to fix them up. Contingency at this point through the process is important. I'm holding a 15%. It's totally to your discretion. Keep in mind, I'm just giving you a template that the board can shift and mix. I want to give you a tool, and if you utilize the tool, it better inform me, really is what it is. So I'm thinking a standard, but I think 15% equates to about $250,000. That's 15% of the value of items B, C, D, and E. Okay? So that way we can not be over budget the first time something hits below that blue line and we have to add it. We've got, we've got a bunch. If we move up to category F, bid advertisement, we go out with our documents, there's going to be costs associated with advertising for general contractors coming in. That would be various mechanisms that there will be a cost there. I've got from superintendent, the cost date that you spent on the bond getting it passed, and then the property, approximate value of the property leased purchased, you know, that element of the number roughly at $672,000. Again, these are numbers that you guys can fill in, be more accurate, and we'll adjust our spreadsheet, but with placeholders. So those are miscellaneous costs that we have. We move up into technology, we know as we do the classrooms and some of the school additions, computers, data, phone, audiovisual equipment, I want to start a budget for those pieces. We'll be helping you with the coordination of those elements as we go through the vendors that you have now, or we can itemize what we think we need for a while, and eventually you'll walk the vendors and get that equipment that comes in, and then the contractor will plug it in, you know, we're simplifying. But we've got to have the numbers in there for that. Right now we're carrying $225,000. As we select the project, that will have an impact on how much of the, how many computers or how many data we need. And as we change the mix of projects, it might change that number. So these things are fluid, but we've got a category. Moving up into D, we have surveys, geotechnical services, professional fees, and materials testing. Again, we're allocating budgets in there for survey costs, geotechnical, those we're going to get bids for, professional fees, that's all the my fees, structural fees, the chemical, the fire protection fees, other consultants that are going to be brought on to do the documents and the planning, you know, to get this implemented. That's roughly, right now holding a 8% budget of construction. That number will fluctuate as well, you know, for that, as our number up on top fluctuates, you know, with it, as all those four items will depending on the project side. Item C, furniture and fixtures, classroom furniture. We're holding about a $20,000 number per classroom to completely put furniture, marker boards, bulletin boards, chairs, that, you know, in a room. That's kind of a standard, I'll tell you, for high school to elementary, it varies for classrooms. 20,000 is an average for a 25-student headcount. We've got numbers in there for 22 classrooms. That's not all the expansion that we have, but it's about three quarters of it, which is going to be our recommendation for how many classrooms we're building. So we've got to carry a number, it's a large number in there for that, along with specialty furniture, bookcases, storage cabinets, non-permanent appliances, the nursing station, we've got refrigerators that we're going to be adding. So we're putting dollars in here to cover that, and I think that's a pretty good conservative approach, you know, for that category. Special construction, all I've got in there right now is experience here signage. When we come back, we're going to have to work with the signage vendors, we're going to put signages into additions and in our updated, you know, entry, so we need to accommodate for that. So we've got a $50,000 number. That won't include any monument signage or anything large, because as you folks know, for a large signage, you could spend $30,000 on one side. This is for interior bathroom signage, lighting signage, lobby signage, you know, that type. But over three or four facilities as we do, that number runs up. B through E is also areas where the general contractor won't be putting his percentage on top of it. So that's why we categorize this below the line. Yes, in fact, some of those items we deem a fit for the appliances, we're going to put into the general contractor's contract and have them supply for whatever reason. Then you add a markup to that. So we try and keep those below the line, to keep as much of that, it may have some extra effort on your part, it does save the percentage markups, you know, on the same thing you're putting in. So we'll help you with that as we get further in the design, about what we recommend the contractor doing, what we recommend you guys doing on your own, you know, through Ray and his group. So they can do a lot for you if you keep it down below that markup. Up above, all that should be determined is the area we're focused on tonight, is our construction contract amount. And we've just listed the schools up there and facilities to be determined, but we've already got a bottom line number. So we approach that, starting at the bottom, 12 million, with the allowances that we've taken out, put into our budget categories, physically leaves $9.382 million for construction. So, again, this is a template, it's a tool for the board to use, we're going to be part of the group helping track these numbers and asking about it, because every time we change, it will change, we can fluctuate designs. So it's going to be an ongoing, living document. But I think with that, you can see the importance of why, from our years of experience, we don't just come in and stay at the blue box, because from 12, we only have 9.3 spent. If I went into it as an architect, designing 12 million, we'd be $3 million over budget. We can't have that. That's why it's going to continually adapt. So, you can take the format, we'll give it to the doctor, and we can use that, and we will update, obviously ours, if we get more information on the top part, but we have a number to work to. That probably is the most critical thing we're going to talk about tonight, because the next step is to take that 9.38 and go, how do we spend that? And what we have is our next tool, that interactive spreadsheet that you've all had copies of, as we select projects, it's going to fill in a number. It's going to have what we think, it's going to have, well, I'll get to that. It'll have escalation of contingency in our top. And then when we load that spreadsheet and we get to 9.4, we're done. And then we can look at what's left and go, well, I would rather have that one in there. And we'll plug it in, we'll see what it does, and we'll say something else. But in my opinion, I think tonight, the exercise, we've got to stay within that budget. And I'll talk a little bit about flexibility. So Roy, next. We talked about this last time, the intermediate, the short-term and the long-term projects, as we select those, we'll put those into a formula. We've got various construction windows that we can hit, we've got immediate projects that we can get underway now and implement, you know, for the rest of this year, and have a Christmas break timeframe that may become valuable to us to do some work in that window. And then we have our next summer window, which is the obvious time to do some smaller projects and begin to shoot for larger projects to pretty much start and be under design construction without impacting, you know, the school process. So those are the three categories that we'll put in once they're selected. Again, coming down to the construction value. Okay, so this is the spreadsheet that we've given you several times a look at. It has our categories on the left, it has our projects that were prioritized through our meetings today, based off your 2013 study. And the numbers that you see in this, these boxes are the numbers from the 2013 study. What we've done at the end is we've escalated those numbers I mentioned last time, we will escalate those as we select them, and we'll have a 10% contingency added as well. So the escalation is to bring the 2013 prices up to market. For example, your classroom additions, based on our mathematics on that study, it's roughly just coming in about $180 a square foot, which is reasonable for that time. We have projects done as late as 2015 that fall in that 180 to 185. Our escalation factor brings those up to around $200 a square foot, based on the square footage, you know, to compare it. We think that's an appropriate amount at this very early stage of doing these projects that we need to hold in our budget. As we get more information about those individual projects, we will refine that budget and bring that number down when appropriate, or have it go up. Once we have a chance to get out and do our distinct additions analysis, meet with the folks again, actually program it, look at our siblings' area in our surveys, and place these buildings, you know, in the right place, we will refine those numbers. But we think, where we have them now listed in here on our escalation, our contingency, we should be fine. And I think that's where we need to start. Our contingency will remain at 10% until we get into our construction documents. That's the third phase of our work. We're going to start with schematic programming, we're going to then do design development, and then we're going to do our construction documents. At the end of our construction documents, we're going to be able to reduce that contingency down to 5%. But we recommend to the board that you hold that 5% through bidding, because as we get out in field and they start building, we don't want to be at zero contingency. Okay? So we'll reduce that, which will give us more money to spend, but we're just not at that point right now, because there's too much unknown that we need to go and do our homework on as we go forward. So it sounds like we've got a lot of contingency, but it's very important to this thing. And we'll refine that when it's safe to do that. You'll see, it could be very transparent. Again, we're just, we're just the designers, the contractors, that's what happens come from the market when we do that. And that's what we're trying to prevent as a group right now. So lots of ways we can do this. I will tell you that we have run several scenarios, and I think we left you with a highlighted spreadsheet last time that were our recommendations of places to start, because we've run through different scenarios with this process to see where we lay it. The one you had in front of you last time equals over $11 million, because we hadn't done our 12 million up yet, so it was over. So what we did, in theory, was that they're all important. All the projects that are on this are important, all the projects that aren't on this priority are important, and they make sense to do. But when you have a bond issue with this amount, we categorize that the additions, the classroom additions, or learning wellness additions, these are the times you accomplish those, we could have the funding that you have, because we can't accomplish those during the year of the capital budget that you have. So the reconstruction are the pieces that you're focusing on. But we also thought it was very important to cover some of the other categories that other facilities got improvement, whether it be in the ADA restroom, the improvement, or the safety and security elements, you know, the entrance. So we had spread that across, but obviously the bulk of the 9.3 now that we know was built into the additional classroom spaces and additions. So that's just the way we interpreted the need, you know, at this point. So, yeah.
One of the questions that was asked of me and reflecting back over the past year we've been together, I didn't really have a great answer, which was, how did we come to decide the number of classrooms needed at each building? Was that during your time of visiting the front schools and talking about their needs assessments at that moment? Because I didn't remember the facilities group come together, and Eric, you might remember, because I don't remember. How did we come up with, we need 10? Can we not do eight? Can we not do five? So, and I ask that because is it possible, if the board wants and feels and believes that something is needed, not to build 10, but to build six?
I had a note here too, because the primary needed concrete in the elementary, except one of 10 and one of six, so I just looked because like, cut it down.
Right.
Half here, half here.
And the library's the one that's running out of work. They're running out of room.
But it's the elementary that's out of space all right. And I think somehow we missed this. And I guess I thought when you guys originally went and talked with the administrators, that their thoughts on their needs were going to be discussed. And finding, and talking to the administrative staff, we didn't get any information from the updates that was more talking about fire. So we really don't have the information from the principals on what they think.
How did your meetings go?
We had one meeting with the principal. You know, the last several months or three months was, you know, all focused on the bond issue, you know, being aware of that was based on the 12. The study that you had accomplished in 2013 identified classroom addition, you know, with it. And that list is what we took and reviewed that during our steering committee and reviewed that at those sta-- I think we had more than one, we probably had two at the most. Yeah, two, no, they're the most, two. And so the numbers that were generated are based on old information, you know, with it. And that's what I was telling you earlier, that we have a lot of work to do at this point, you know, with these categories. And it's not so much focusing on, on the numbers, you know, here in class.
Yes, the need for extra, building factories.
As the leader, because just because that report you had done in 2015 said 10 classrooms, if we identify that we think the primary school needs the addition, you know, with it, it's going to be generally, we're going to go back and sit down with that school, we're going to, we're going to do that Q and A on how they came up with that, that number back in 2013, whether those people are there or not. We're going to make that analysis and confirm to the board, this is now, if we've met with them four or five times, we need to those locations. But with the target area, we think we need more growth. Then we, Archimedes, can come back with our findings instead of what you had in 2013.
Sure, and that makes sense. So it's not necessarily the number the boards look at, it's the need for the addition.
Correct, correct. And you can see then, if we need to do that portion of the work, you know, which is something we needed to do, but at that point, what was determined by the steering committee months ago is, that's not having an impact on the dollar value we're going to the bond. If you remember, that was a different mathematics, because we had $18 million worth of need identified in 2013. So our suggestion was, let's get the bond. We know we have the need, we can identify that and communicate it clearly. Are we there with all the details? Absolutely not. That's why these boards will put together some pieces of areas we want to work on, and we think we have more needs than what we're asking you for, and that's been, you know, part of the public.
And it comes back to that, you don't know what you don't know.
Right.
And you're only going to know that until we have 12, the board thinks these are great areas to focus on. Okay, teachers, administrators, what are your thoughts? And then you're going to come back to the board and say, okay, you picked nine, nine three projects, but the teachers and the administrators think this is important, so then you shift to that project. That's the direction you want to go.
That's exactly all the further we can go, you know, at this point, because I don't have the facts yet, you know, with it. And that's, you know, we assist with the bond, you know, help be successful, our work begins now as architects and planners. That's what we're going to start, to do that we build it. Doesn't mean to report the work you had done in 2013 for not, it's, you know, it's good basis of information, targeted areas that we know we need, that, we just need to go refine that now. If it's eight classrooms instead of 10, we've got that allotment, furniture in those two classrooms. Everything else down that line decreases, we maintain that money. I still think though, in general, out of the 12, that nine that I've identified is probably, if it goes up, wonderful. We put more money in order to the school. But I just want to have a general understanding that that's the reason it dropped so quickly. There's good reason for that. And, but if we can identify the need in the areas which we've done, I think that will give us direction if we go meet with it in a more organized fashion, come back to the board with more details, this is what we think it needs, here's where it should go, here's how it looks, you know, all the details that you want to see, and by the way, here's what it costs. And we'll populate those top blue lines with, that's $4 million at the junior high, this is, and here's how we need that number, you know, just when we get down to the bottom of the blue line. So it is, it's a little chicken and the egg, but we've got to have the money, the value that we're going with. I mean, it is, it is what it is. We deal with this all the time, I believe. I complimented the board last time, because a lot of times we're out there designing, and we can design, go meet the need, you pay us the $98 million, and we have 12, you're wasting a lot of time with that. Well, this is the better approach, it's just we've got to wait a little longer to have, have the facts, you know, with it. So I appreciate the way you guys do it. Now we've just got a lot of work to do.
Personally, I like the number. Since you don't look into this, I mean, before I say, you put this and this and this, because to me, the science lab is pretty important.
Well, I see, and I see what Archimedes is trying to do, is to give the boards perspective, because what they don't want to do is to go to your administrators and them say, you know, I think that we need to do this. And the boards believe, well, that, we don't see that as a priority. And when the board sets a priority, and then you go and solicit input and evaluate your decision, that's a solid way to do it, otherwise you're, you're telling people no, and they're going to leave you actually with your own. And I think you're communicating to your staff, this is what we like, what do you think? And that, that really slipifies and has positive conversations. Does that make sense? And I get your point, why do we want, why do we want to say we want something if we don't even know it's an actual need? But truly, I don't think it's on this list that it wasn't actually needed some sort of thing.
I mean, our census is going down.
Right, our enrollment.
They're not actual classrooms, they're more expanded and things grown.
Right, yeah. Their curriculum is expanded.
Their structural curriculum is not growth.
More than growth.
I think the growth is identified based on the information that was done in 2013, what we gleaned from our meetings, there is need for more classroom spaces at all those locations. I think the numbers are debatable, you know, with it. But the relocation of some of the nursing administration things that will free up some areas, but in some cases they'll take up classes that we need next to the entrance. So that's going to bring on demand for more classroom space. I think, I don't think those numbers are too far off. What we don't have is demographics and growth that helps support that. A lot of these are curriculum, they have special needs, they have other curriculum they're teaching that needs a classroom space, but right now they're sharing and doubling curriculum up. And that's really the bulk, you know, of this. If you look at the safety and security, what we have are allowances there to come in, you know, the cameras and the 3M film, security film, the access control systems, and in some cases refurbishing some of the main entrances to get more secure entries. Although that's a lot of money to be added up, it's not in comparison to the additions, you know, across the top.
I noticed that on your original post with the board, you left off the cameras in the district. So the money that you had, which you had safety and security out of the east, and that was, of course, again, your proposal. And some of the administrators we've heard don't believe they need to keep that at their building. So again, that was assessed here. But the 3M film, I mean, right in our meeting with, and looking, is there anything we can do internally with the district's budget to pay? Because as I see, there's not going to be a lot of changes to the office structure at the high school or the intermediate, they're pretty well with what they are. And so if the district can look at how much would that cost for us to improve to our capital budget, it will assist with more money and bonds, and plus, sorry, but there's not going to be fees associated with it if we do it internally, and it would cut and save costs.
There's no doubt.
So, and then I appreciate Mrs. Scharsky bringing up the last meeting, investigating, doing, writing the grant to Jefferson Memorial, and getting weight room equipment for the junior high that's approved, because we're going to upgrade that facility if it's selected. So there's things the district's doing that I think will assist in this, but also, and it's like we said on the phone, I don't know how strong a good number basis we have in 2013 to work with, because that was done prior to, meaning I don't know if it was just a, I think it might cost this, rather than what is the actual functional cost in today's dollar, if that makes sense.
Well, the one is, we have the same opinion. You know, our job coming on board a second, you know, in that is to make sure we're verifying. And where we targeted that verification is that for big numbers.
Right.
And we went back to the math and looked at the square footage that we talked about, the numbers, did our own funding, and found that their number for square foot, however they got to it, which I don't know, was accurate with what we would have predicted at that point in time. Once that's done, we kind of pulled off and didn't do that for all of them, because it just wouldn't be worth your time to pay us to do that. We need more information, we'll probably, as we get more information, we'll affect that more than what they predict is the cost for us. But if we were way off in those square footage numbers for the additions, we would be, you know, be in worse trouble, you know, with it. Now we're just at a lack of information, you know, with it. We know what our dollar is that we have to spend. I think our calculations today with the 9.3, I think are fairly accurate, we're going to find that's going to be somewhere in that range, especially with the property, you know, coming out of that, with that number, those large numbers. So I'm confident that we don't have 11. So when we go meet with the administrators, the same, the same as we met with them before, we've got to have a budget, we're going to have to stick to it, and it's going to be, we know there's more needs, we have to prioritize it, and here's the areas that were talked about, you know, the districts back then, they haven't gotten better, you know, with it. So I, I think we're going to find we're not that far. Um, so I, I, I think we're going to find we're not that far off. But there's going to be ways to split, you know, with it. We got to, we probably should start first with those additions on the need to do the base dollar values.
Quick question on the junior high school, which obviously has the most need. And, you know, the proposed additional classrooms in order to remove modular classrooms, she's talking about the annex building, right?
No, it's in the two modulars, it's kind of modular trailer.
No, I, I know what they are. So we're going to bring all those kids in and then are those going to be, are those going to be removed?
But yes, we want to remove those modulars. Right, were they from the seventy, forty, eighty?
I would love that. But I mean, on here for security, it's got, um, installing cameras on the junior high school annex. Is that, or, or in the annex part, are they referring to the modular trailer?
No, no, there's a red brick building directly behind the junior high.
Yeah, I know that.
That has two classrooms.
Yeah.
And I don't know what Mr. Allison's recommending moving those two figures out. Because the one home mat building is pretty well set for home mat. And none of these buildings, I don't think are being geared for the home mat building.
To me, well, especially after what happened with the last, uh, security scare. And my kids being out in that building and other kids too, and then not to be walking in. I mean, I hope the goal would be to get all the kids into one building and not utilize that.
I think right now only one room of the modules that we need. And those kids are kind of.
But I mean, that home mat building.
But the annex, that is correct, what we call the annex, I do not know if that is actually. And that might be something we need to work for, which I agree with you, we need them all in one building. And I think that's what Mr. Allison likes to have.
I just wondered if, if they were going to be all moved in, then we wouldn't have to install.
Right, right. If we're doing that, we don't, and Ray brought that up today. We don't need to worry about the annex if we're, other than making sure it's real good for the switchgear tower that we installed downstairs. It's still, it's still of value to the district. We have value in that structure, whether repurposed into something different than housing students possibly.
I just think there's a lot of money you could save if you were, I mean, students may not necessarily be there for security.
No, no question, yeah, question.
If you have another opportunity to sit down and I can talk to the principal and everybody at that location to find out the best use of that school. One to get your options. To be able then allocate where we put up money. Or I think you value whether it's cheaper to build a covered walkway and closure.
Right.
To that building, rather than move that to the inside.
Yeah, and those are the details, you know, I think the objective back in two thousand and thirteen is get all of them out and add to the ten classroom, you know, addition with the new addition. That's a growth that you're going to refurbish and moving out of temporary situation. And back into a security. And, you know, definitely the, the labs and the music room, the cafeteria, those are all, those are all elements. And, you know, part of the tough decisions really, which projects can you do? I know after, you know, discussions tonight, if we get into the junior high and it just makes sense to, uh, because we're in the area and we're, we're, we're doing questions to do the science labs. With the economy of scale, makes sense. That's something we're going to bring back to the board as well, you know, as I mentioned. You're in the area and you're doing the work. You'll get better pricing if you expand as this finish. But it will take funding from something else. Eventually, you know, we're going to get to the point where, as I mentioned, that we're there. We've, we've selected our project and this, this is what we accomplished at this point in time. Yeah.
Think the, the junior high, when you designed it, kind of like the high school where we put four on, you'd be able to just keep that.
Just sort of the split face block, um, solid. And that, that, we certainly were, their lab and works spanned out.
I, um, because of grades in some of the places, you know, they'll issue sign grades. So, you know, Joe Fosse will have to look at that on every location. We've got additions that will work.
Right, I'm just talking about that, you know, they grab a lot there.
Yeah, junior high spot, yeah. Um, we'll have to look at that, you know, where it makes sense for the, you know, safety setup. Some of the items, the, the switch here, um, we've identified as immediate need, something that we just need to get going on and do. That's a thirty thousand dollar, like Ray, you've even got some preliminary pricing on that. Um, and the junior high gymnasium, HVAC and bleachers. Those three projects, we had tagged as immediate need, that could go, that could go immediately. Didn't need any research, didn't need any, just need detailing done. Um, that's, those are the three that we selected out of here that could get moving now. You know, and have a definite relocation.
Monday night, they're thinking on that, if we talk about that switchgear barrel lag, maybe it's going weight room, it's going actually to a, a supply room. And you know where it gets.
But we don't have to.
Monday night, I spent three hours in the junior high gym dripping wet sweat with basketball. And I had multiple parents, hey, come on, when are you getting the air conditioning? I had this one. And they're like.
Well, you know, so there's, here's the, well, every time this board, you know, says, let's do those, I know the reasons we're lifting, we can't crack it back. It's gone. But those three, to me, the recommendations, I think are something that we, we can get going with and show some progress also. You know, after the successful bond that we're moving in the forward direction. But our air conditioning, um, well, we need time on air handling units, you know, once we get a mortgage. So it won't be this summer, you know, that will, will be. But we're, we're at the timeframe we're at. We don't even, uh, the order of the switchgear, that's going to be something that we have the time and then there'll be a shutdown and a plug in if you're well. And we've got to do that for a right period of time, you know, so we, we'll be shutting off the power. But we can have it all here and shut off that. Those are, I'm sorry, if we're going to be further into the projects, you know, if we can pull the trigger sooner than later, obviously we want to take advantage of that. But we've got to also look at the impact there's to the building that we're doing, you know, for this, this year. We would have to shut the gym off for a two week period. And that happens within the school year. That doesn't affect, you know, scheduling. But, and then what could done to do it. So a lot of those things will weigh in as we look at the bodies we have further into.
So are you saying that like the junior high bleachers could actually be accomplished this summer?
The, the work, the work from those type vendors, as they did last February. Then, uh, under instructions for that, you know, pulling the box being implemented this, right now, was did in February.
Right.
So.
I think they'll do us, Ray, was it October, September, October, November-ish?
Yeah.
Because it takes eight, six, eight weeks, you know, to put that in. And that's what we're shooting for that fall.
So is there going to have to be, I know that the newer bleachers have a different, I don't know what you call it, gray or soap? Is there going to be changes within the gymnasium itself to install the new bleachers?
We talked about removing that wall behind there and forward to have additional.
Get more, any more scene? Um, once we do that, once we start moving the walls, we, we go past the vendor, you know.
I know.
And we start doing a contract and part again. Um, I still think we can accomplish that. We just need to find a window where we can be down and closed for that period of time while you're in school. Which, that we have to make sure you're all agree with. And we'll get durations of time by contact. And once they start, when they'll be finished. And so they know exactly when those days are and what's going to be left. But if we expand that scope a little bit and increase it, uh, that just adds to the timeframe.
Well, that is, can the bleachers be removed and replaced without structural change?
Ray, you tell us when he got them in, installed, he say a week?
Yeah, it was pretty quick when they arrived on the site. That's, but that's after the general.
It's not, they're ripping everything out.
Yeah, that's after the general contract, they ripped it out, built the new walls and he's ready for the bleachers to come in. That's the short term, that's the easy part, installing bleachers. Kind of like the HVAC, we've got to put steel up in the roof to hold the unit. The unit gets picked up, put in over a weekend and hooked up in three or four days and run. The hard part's restructuring the roof to hold. We have to close.
This wall, this wall behind the bleachers, the layer just, fire the wall.
Push it over and.
That they put in, store it.
Put four feet between the block and all.
As long as you're not load bearing a basery.
I, I worry, I've looked at the wall and, yeah, we, we could certainly pull that down and get things ready and prep the area. But, you know, the week to install bleachers, we can sell bleachers. It's not going to be a week or two, go in, tear the bleachers out, pull that wall out, get everything cleaned up front, look at the floor, what impacts does that have? You know, if the bleachers have some electric power to it, if we have it in that location, bring it over. There's a lot of things that, that not everybody knows yet, what's actually involved in replacing the bleachers, you know what I'm saying? So it's, it's a window that you would have to work with the administration to either block off passage gym and give the contractors enough room to do its work. While on the other side, there may be something continuing to go, but it won't be full court basketball or something. So a lot of those things will have to be discussed, analyzed, determined whether or not it's worth going that out. Or do we go ahead and say, okay, in the Christmas break, the week before Christmas and the week after Christmas, you don't get to get, but we're able to finish the whole project all in one window. Those are the things that we really have to blow up our seats and get into the project. We'll know when we're able to answer with a lot of, uh, education. So Greg, are you recommending that the board look at what you gave them and yell up and see what their thoughts are about your recommendations? And try to get to a spot where you can take this to the administrators, speak with them, come back to the board and then visit the teachers in August. I mean, what, what, what's your recommendation on this?
Yeah, I think definitely so. I think as far as the expansion is concerned, that, that would be where I'd focus, because that's where the bulk of the dollars are. Um, the other portion is the ADA restrooms in the school, that is what it goes, there's one another considerable amount of revenues. Um, and, uh, I think the, the security entrances and stuff, um, we, we can, we can infill, you know, with those. But we've got to make determinations on your, on the flasher, you know, additions of the schools. If the wish is to maybe not meet the entire expansion need, but to make sure we cover each of the locations that acquires it. That's how we can approach that, you know, uh, with that directive, and then come back with the numbers and the thoughts and the programming to substantiate there and say, well, that really doesn't work. Because the need here is great, the need here is not, but here are the numbers.
And we've worked on some of them, but they're still consistent. I mean, ultimately, and, and Ray can talk a little about that. We fixed the plumbing as the, uh, held entry. Has I been here three times, Ray, or twice?
Um, about three times.
Uh, no, it's, okay. And so it's just an ongoing consistent habit to, that we need to get out and.
And we're at the point that if it goes to that.
Back up one more time, they're going to shut the building.
That's.
And that, I believe we fixed, right, Ray?
That was last fix.
That is one of the, uh, one of the things. Block, they didn't have the two drains hooked up, and so it was backed up in this one pipe. So we had business with them getting it down, remember that?
Yes, well, I had the problem.
So yes, those plumbing issues were there. They, they're still existent, but I don't think they're to the level that they were three years ago.
Is that something that you can, can be ordered to do?
It depends, if it's jackhammering up the floor, no. If it is working outside, digging up tubes, that's a building.
Is that something we need to find out, how, how, you know, could be.
Significant, right? What are your, what's your thoughts on it? How significant are the plumbing issues at elementary that they need to be addressed? Do we need to leave the budget fund?
And it's something. Our opinion is it needs to be addressed. You've got a number of plumbing issues and you're going to try to raise some of these ADA compliance.
Right.
Uh, we really need to, throughout that plumbing issue. And most of them are based on the lower floor limits. The upper floor is not the issue. It's all down below, pretty well almost, kind of the northeast corner of the building where you're going out to make, uh, public.
And is that something your team would be able to handle or is it something we're going to?
That'll be an outside force to make that happen.
And that's something I'd like to check.
Really think that's a million dollar report?
No, no, probably not that much on that part, it wouldn't get that high. But you got, you got some work to do because the way you're looking at probably doing it, it's a little financially a little about it and you're not doing as much, um, tear up. But they've got interior liners now that goes into the pipes and so forth. So it's like plain pipe inside pipe. And it hasn't proven that it's very durable. So instead of them busting up floors and opening up a bunch of ground, you're, you're being limited how much you're opening up. But you're also at the same time in pre, in increasing the structural use, use of stuff. So the other thing was, is, you know, as we have the opportunities to bring restrooms upgraded to ADA compliancy. That's why you also want to be there doing the plumbing upgrades. You know, because you don't want to go and do plumbing upgrades and then five years later come back and try to upgrade the, the restrooms. It, it just doesn't make you enough sense, so.
That's one of the items that wasn't highlighted.
Correct.
So if we should consider one from that end with the ADA compliance.
We, we stood the level that we can based on the work that we're doing.
And again, in the highlighted aspect, I was trying to, you know, pick out some things and try to give an example, um, and get them. I got to a certain point I had to stop.
Right.
So it's kind of.
And we may be almost there and none of them answered all the questions.
Right, of course not. Maybe at the home. I would just think to see that building in a situation where we essentially would have to shut down the building. So. General question, I keep, the three M security fund at entry glass location, I keep looking at that and thinking, what good is it at entry level locations if it's not at all of these places? Because if somebody's going to enter, if that's there, well, I'll just go to a different spot in the building.
Typically, when someone wants to break in your building, they're not going to go to the classroom to talk about it. They're going to try to break in and get some access so that no one's watching. Or that's when people are angry when we deny them access, they're going to try to break in one time. And, and that's one of the things, that's one of the things we're looking at. Uh, right now, we're having some people come down, it's a time of what are the costs? Uh, the last time I got messes between ten and fifteen thousand a building. Now, of course, it's in two thousand and ten.
Well, it depends on how much the last you do, the quantity.
I do it at the junior high for cafeteria, but you need to.
Correct. But, you know, we, we talked about security, you know, a couple of weeks ago, about the different levels we can achieve. And we're, we're going by national standards, you know, where, where you're, where you're protected and where they suggest we protect. That's a front entrance, you know, with the, and you're, and you're rear entrance. You cannot, you can't, you can put it on all your glass, you can put it on all, it's just a cost. So they're, they're giving you a long averages. Where people are coming out, so putting up most of our effort in a secure entrance. Um, uh, but that's a dollar thing. And then if you threw the allowance of twenty-five thousand in high schools, then you'd be bored. And some of the other schools are relaxed because there's less class. That was a general average of what we thought you could spend, you know, across the district, for the areas that we want to do and try to focus.
Well, and that, you know, and I understand all that, but it's like, if you're not going to do the entrances, then why?
Just sounds better than nothing.
Yeah, it's level one, uh, than putting them. If we did the secure entry, we'd want to do it that you're there, spending money, go, go do it. You know, if, if we're not touching one of the other entries, putting the film up isn't added benefit, it's not wasted, it's better protection. It's just not as good as you can.
We talked about with the primary, that that's a particular thing.
Mm-hmm.
And so that, that's entry.
Right. And we try and cover the main entrance and the egress, you know, four of those. That would be the main target that we'd look for. Uh, main entrance is that's where most of the problems start. The back entrance is because it's isolated, as you mentioned. Classrooms, um, we get a dollar, the dollar.
Love to, if you just kind of focus on the most.
I mean, in our schools, we're, we're designing, uh, you know, water detention along the right, along the edges of buildings. So that it makes it harder to get to the windows. That's the level this is getting to.
Oh.
Yeah.
Actually designing the landscape.
We usually one off a corner where we don't see it. Now one of the things is make it more difficult to get to the longer edges of the building because we can't afford to make them both look. You know, that's just the philosophy that's happening, you know, so. That costs a lot more money to do that than to put your detention in one area, to stretch it out. But again, it's not really a lot of, uh, of security. Yeah. My, my recommendation is to look at, look at the categories, you know, with it. Um, if there was a, a place we can help, I think if we were able to go back to the administrators of the, the main facility. I think if we were able to go back to the administrators of the, the main facility at some point in time and do that initial discussions and programming, you know, with them, I think they'd bring some better information back to the board as you're looking at those categories and see if we found there's any major adjustments to the numbers, you know, with this. I don't think we're going to be going from ten to two because we asked a couple of questions. Again, we're, we're talking about, right, but that may give some leeway to push the money towards the elementary school and plumbing or additions that are, you know, with it. I don't think it's going to manage to all of a sudden, we get to do everything, you know, with it. I think you guys understand, but at least we can fine tune from where we're at because we would like to have more information as well to better, you know, focus on.
That'd be interesting to see where, like, fully fine classrooms to be third, you know, for primary elementary.
Sure, yeah. You guys have great, great people working at these places. They will find their way, if you give them four, maybe six, don't make four work, you know. That way, everybody gets, you know, gets more across the board, you know. I think it's an expectation, if, if that's all you gave us tonight, and let's say we got our meetings starting tomorrow scheduled, we could go in there with that consensus out. We, we're going to try and give you whatever we can, but we've got to be consistent across the board, you know, equity in some way, shape, that's kind of a theme, you know, that, that important districts before, we've got to be equitable with our students. You can't rebuild the junior high school and have everybody else suffer. You know, that is a theme, and it's pretty common. At least we go into that, into the meetings that we understand, but our two meetings with the group, they all, all do. We're going to get the best priority for the money we can spend, you know, this part, and we'll do, we, we appreciate you for the work that we're doing. Because we all do, you know, short the middle, but you're prepared to do it.
What about, if there's any, do you have any concerns with what's marketing, or would you rather something else be selected that isn't? In that way, Greg, Roy go back, and myself, and Ray, and we sit down and ask the administrators, okay, well, we really want the science labs. Well, can you do with, on the classroom duty, what your additions need to be like? And have those conversations, or do you just want to trash this and go line by line, decide, well, that's a little bit what we want in the incentive to, to, to... Well, I've got a few options.
My only thing I mentioned was the elementary funding, because that situation was a bit of an operational, I think that's a bit of a drive. Uh, so if we're going to lump in into the ADA restroom, be, I don't know, but I think we should make sure we know that. Yeah, make sure that is part of the ADA...
Seven three is the first real science lab that they have, and trying to promote status, and there are more guys about finance. My understanding is that those labs are free, but maybe that's a little... I wonder if all these things work, but, um...
That's just the foundation, though, for their funding, education, national workers.
So we circle plumbing and some glass. Any, any others?
Yeah, and I just had a question about the junior high, uh, whether they cafeteria, music rooms. Is that just a remodel?
Yes, that, that would be a nice, that would be a nice to have, but that's not what we have to have.
There are some moisture issues, there are a few moisture issues on the floor. I think in the cafeteria, that we would address at the time that we would refinish the whole bit, but...
But we can address the moisture issues right there.
Correct.
Of the cafeteria, is that a safety concern?
No, I mean, there is, there was some, uh, in the, in the brief meetings that we had in there, there was some conversation about the, the line and how they flow through, but it works, obviously. If you're going to go into those areas, there's some improvements that I'd like to see. I don't think, it's not a, not that we've heard or understood that there's anything code wise or safety wise or anything like that.
It's modernized. Modernization of the fixtures and...
Well, what would you do with the restroom?
Right, they wanted to take, um, where nurses, like those offices, just out of restructure and take one of the classrooms and move her up to the front.
It would be the underground space.
A lot of the...
Right, but there was one for the primary.
Right, same thing, to have, they were going to restructure the offices and move them over to current music rooms, but also take the space and have, where the nurses are by the office, rather than parents have to walk all the way to my building.
That's, that is what happened.
So I think those are...
That is a science issue too, I mean, there's, there's, you know, standard, we have to be five hundred and thirteen square feet. I think it's a minimum, and neither one of the nurse stations goes there, you know, with it. That's just a, a big expansion.
Correct. Because, you know, the intermediate's not right, not the outside level.
In, in today's school design, the, the key is to get the administration, nurse area up towards the front where you've got a lockdown type vestibule, where, like this school, you walk in, you go in through the offices, you get to the nurse office, you get all of that without even touching the school corridors.
I'm just going to do that one.
Now, if you're, you're over, that's when you come back and start through the cuts, because I think they're going to help you. I really believe that, I don't think we're going to leave ten. But I, I think it's important to say, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's a little cheaper to, to add when you're there rather than, you know, if you add five classrooms, you can't really cut the price in half.
No, it's not a, that's not how we would use this table. It, it, it never works, you have to pay for the money. Once they're out there mobilized, and there's, you're paying all the general conditions, you're paying costs, if you build six classrooms or five, they're going to charge you about the same for their, for, for their overhead profit. So it's not a, we're not dividing that number by ten, and that's how much we can save if I come back, so. We'll, we'll try and, you know, again, predict what that, what actually is, but I think we've got to go back and get that information about those, all those expansions. I would consider, if I was in your seat, everything on these two pages, these front two pages, whether they're highlighted or not, are our target projects. And now we go back and, and if we're actually, let us go back and do some work, work with that list of projects and see what makes, based on some better information that we can accomplish for the pricing. Because we're going to also do a little bit more estimating on what we found. You know, like with the plumbing, it's a completely undocumented number to us, for how much that is, and what you've accomplished to date. Some things have been done, you know, to date, and here we are escalating and putting a pencil shift and changing the... But again, it won't, it won't find another four million dollars. You know, it's just going to refine it so you can have better decisions.
Yeah, we've, we've done that on the spreadsheet already, yeah.
What, then we save three hundred thousand dollars just on that?
What else can we add?
One of the questions that I guess I'd have in my mind, and we'll find that I kind of speak freely with this. While we're doing this conversation with the administration, is it, is the board have any opinion on, uh, maybe targeting those, those three that we want to maybe get going right away? And let us really start to focus on those, parallel to us getting more information, is that the, you know, the electrical, the bleachers, the APAC, are those definitely top priorities that, that you want to get going on today and no matter what, I mean?
You have to have electrical...
Well, I, I see, I hear it every time I've come to the board and heard them talk, those three pop up every time. And I think, you know, if, if we may be able to get started on making those three real projects, we can get this moving while in a parallel fashion, we're out there talking and trying to set up, um, programming and those types of meetings, so. They're, they're in that, they're in that five hundred, five hundred thousand range, you know, again, based on, on what we've kind of got. But we need a little bit more investigation, a little bit more, uh...
I think it's something around two point five. We've got to work, you know, score the, we're going to have to, in the lead.
Right.
So your responsibility is to, to ask the board, of course, you still have to...
Right, just to...
Really, those windows for closing aren't going to be that long. I don't think that's going to be a three month process. Yeah, if we, we tackle this with our administrators, these two pages, if they look, these are the board's request. How do we make this work and what we can actually accomplish off this? Let's do some fine tuning. It gives us a lot of things to start focusing on, you know, with this. And, you know, while we're doing our due diligence on these other things, we may find some other things that were never in the two thousand and fifteen thing that we got to come back and tell you. So, so Roy will come tell you the bathroom.
I'll be the messenger, but...
So if he comes up here to the bathroom, it's a five hundred sixty, but, but I, you know, just let, you know, we're, we're going to, we're going to do our due diligence and let you know what the real story, that it might be important. And that timeframe will be set on when we can get those administrators back from somewhere in the interim.
I'll make them come in.
All right, there we go.
I mean, if you want to say, tell the board, we want to try to report back to you on the twenty second of June. Administrator should be available.
That's good, you're quick turn around for us.
I'm just saying, we can make it happen.
Yeah.
I can make our people available.
They'll be excited, well, they'll be excited.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you have a, on your, we need your meeting scheduled. Um, you're, you're not just referring to the board education meeting, you're talking about the administrators too. And aren't there going to be committees for this that involve also parents or, or teachers as well? Just a little input on, I just know from being involved in remodeling of, of areas, when you don't ask somebody to teach there, even if, you know, it's just about where's the best, I think, I think it's important for these people.
The teachers definitely gets, parents, to the students, things that we can, um...
It feels like a committee, it would be addressed as far as in this...
Our recommendation, you know, if we had to a bond issue with the steering committee that we bounced ideas off, you know, we had, had this more organization. As we go off in a different facility, we still need to regroup that steering committee, um, because they're kind of related on the C E P. But since we've done this, I think you're offering up a lot of time for us to come and report directly to you, you know, for that information. Maybe just talking outside, maybe if we form groups at each of those facilities that we go meet with. We could still have a steering committee if we needed, because we want board members on it, we want administrators, Doc and Ray, you know, same type of mix we had before. But since you're so available, you know, we could maybe skip that step and put more energy into the groups at each facility. And we've had parents involved before, um...
I mean, that's not a...
Not, not at the, not at, we need the principal, we need her or him to decide who's key groups, bring, you know, that support level in is very important at that point, um...
Just for an example, we had a remodel of a unit I worked on, and it was great, except they put a bathroom in the nurses' area, so there was no employee bathroom, which is, which is just a mistake. It was an oversight, so we were like, what? We didn't have a bathroom. So, you know, those kind of little things, like even if you're, you're not, when you move the nurses or, they, the nurses didn't put on...
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
That kind of...
It's like if we were, if we go over to the junior high, just as an example, you know, we would want somebody, obviously the principal, maybe vice principal, whoever, that is a teacher, a science teacher, a nurse, and maybe a parent. So we've got a group of six people that all have a little piece in the, in the puzzle that they are interested in, yet they're sitting there watching out for everybody else.
At that level, a curriculum.
It'd be a real, real, you'd want to work with them. If you get ten, I mean, then it becomes a, everybody's going for their own agendas. So we like to keep that in that five, six, seven range, and it's the key people that are within what we're trying to do. You want them in the group. Last thing we want is a nurse to go in there and do things and say, I would never design it this way.
Well, have, have, have we ever done a nurse, uh, office without the nurse?
No.
Highly motivated.
No.
Yeah.
And nurses are...
They are very motivated.
Yes, they're motivated.
Very good, very good. We can help form those committees, uh, through there and get that set up, review who that is at each location, get a schedule set up for when we can meet. Then I'll report back then on when I think we can have some information that's valuable. But in the meantime, you guys are good with us focusing on those two pages. We'll implement those first three projects and get those going. I bet we can report some status back, you know, pretty quickly, um, you know, uh, if we get those up and rolling. So we'll have various things to come back to. Well, again, thank you very much for all your time, guys.
Thank you very much.
You may not get a copy. Would you get a copy?
Well, you could do one for the minutes, Greg, please. All right, so for the plumbing discussion, I think this is being just a little presentation she's going to, uh, get set up here for you. While she's doing that, I'm going to hand out, uh, this to you. We had, uh, Mrs. Saharsky visit, and she brought forward about fifteen questions that we went over with her. We want to share them with you in order to make sure that if you have similar questions, we can address those with you. Um, before we get started, before we get started, um, reading this, I'm going to let Kelly get that set up. She has, uh, another sheet of paper, I think, that I'm going to start with. It kind of goes along. It goes along with what, uh, what we've shared this...
I like your color and dress.
Oh, thanks.
Comfortable. Okay, okay. So this is a present, the skeleton of presentation that I usually would do with, um, the committees when I have a budget meeting. Um, I go over the five components that the state requires that we have in our budget. The very law says that we must include these components, the budget message, which, you know, obviously have all these, you might, both proposed revenue and expected revenue, um, proposed or expected expenditure is what I'm coming here. Details to the debt service, all of our payments that we have to make for our outstanding debt, um, and then a general summary of the budget. The budget message, it's narrative, kind of highlights the things that are going on, um, big changes from one year to the next. I will put that in significant events, which the bond issue is, we're supposed to, in our next issue this year. Then I have to talk about the proposed revenues. Those are the revenue figures from every source that we get revenue from. Um, I include the figures from last year, the year that we are just ending, like we were in right now until June thirtieth, and then next year. Um, the last two are estimates. I don't know what, how we're going to end this year exactly yet, and I, I would say next year we're just going to start it on. Typically, anything happens with me, I'm conservative on revenue side, I'm conservative on the expenditure side. So my estimates usually, you know, are just that estimate, you know, just typically would be there. The preliminary budget that you receive, and this pie chart is in your budget as well, kind of shows the breakdown of how we get our revenue, a little fuzzy to these, smaller sections. But you can see the state and local are pretty equal on what we receive as part of revenue. Next year, local will be a little higher because I think our assess valuation's going to go up from what we've been hearing. I don't have those numbers yet, so you can kind of see where all of our money comes from. Um, proposed expenditures, I... Um, proposed expenditures, I include all the categories, every expense that we're going to have. Again, include finishing last year, the year we're ending, and next year. Again, that's the message. Do you wanna be conservative? I'm more conservative with utilities, insurance. We don't want something happen. This year, utilities was safe. I don't know if they were safe, but they were lower because we had a very mild. This is how the expenditures are broken up in my budget, and again, this is in your book. You can see we spend most of our national people, salaries invested, take up most of our budget, and then there's a little bit, you have a little flex. Debt service, you'll see all these details in your book. All of our bond and debt, that's what our debt service fund is for. The money we borrow, we need to bond, and the money that we spend, the original interest and any fees that we have to spend for process management. Um, the general budget summary. That and the message can be combined, they don't have to be. Um, it's kind of just an overview, the same thing I see when I report two pages. Um, and that's your one little page, it's the budget summary. It contains revenue and expenditures by fund, starting in the balances. I think I give you an extra year to look at as well on that. So also, besides the things that the state says we have to have in our budget, you know, I have to comply with all these other things. I R S laws, audit standards, school finance guidelines, statute. So for seventeen eighteen, and if you forget the budget, I hope, you can see the things that we're doing coming up the next few years. We're still gonna be conservative on our spending, nothing. Um, we're gonna do a big, mass curriculum replacement. We're giving staff experience movement, and we're going to continue to provide support for benefits, and then technology upgrades as well. The revenue, I monitor the local tax collections because that's what's happening with our money, and also the funding changes that the state, that are levels. So. And this, this is what the, my budget committees get when they see, because the sheets that the principals get to work from don't include these things. They don't include their utilities, they don't see how much utility they spend in their buildings. They don't include property and liability insurance, postage, property relief, P D, things like that. They don't, there's a separate committee for P D, and they don't determine their budget on those other items. I need that question. As far as the allocations that they do receive, I use the core data enrollment count that we report to debt. That's the best number that I have used for those buildings. And then there's a per people amount, debt and needs, those types. This is what I think kind of, just a big pie. You can't make a pie bigger, we gotta deal with the pie that we have, so we do our best to split it up.
Oh, you made everyone hungry.
I know, right?
Fourteen, you're sixteen.
All right, so hopefully everyone has their budget book with them. We'll, we'll go through these questions, uh, relatively quickly. Uh, the first one we got was regarding the primary narrative. So if you open up your, your, your budget to the narratives, which is just right after, I believe, the budget message, they begin there. Kelly's putting that for you, budget assumptions, this is very important, and those are assumptions that we, we work on to assume these, these things are gonna happen. Uh, we know what's gonna happen with insurance, we have pretty good ideas what's gonna happen with retirement, we have good ideas what's happening with salaries. So those are assumptions we put in there. The first one was the narrative, the messenger cost, is this just the messenger or is the app included? And we've, and the short answer is, yes, the app is included, and that's broken out across the buildings. We're still planning on the one welcome back messenger. Uh, but as you see, what, what Kelly does is break it out evenly rather than just one building having the cough up. And we, we do that because it's for all the buildings, not just one particular building. Uh, so again, that happens and put it in there. Uh, the intermediate narrative was.
I agree. Um, so last year, you only did the one at the beginning, and then we kept waiting for the app to get started. So that's, so that's basically what's gonna happen. So next year, if the app is real successful, will you proceed during the way with that?
Uh, I really. I'll, I'll, I say this because I'm.
I would think so, well.
I'd love to, but I know some parents really, they might not have the app. Or if we look at the future, it's really successful, we see that that's a great mode, we have a lot of viewers, then we want to do it. Um, so we'll have to gauge it then. But I think a lot of parents like getting that welcome back and seeing the school supplies and.
They do. Yeah, that was the beginning of the year.
That's pretty important.
Yeah.
But what we've done, like I said, we've, we've broken those costs out. Kelly has, has put those in different areas, so. Um, next is, is the intermediate narrative. Uh, Mrs. Harzke asked, hey, what's going on with that budget? Why is his budget amount lower? Well, the reason being, and it's a simple reason, is that if he has the sixth grade going second, uh, seventh grade is larger than the kids coming from fourth and the fifth. So if he gets his allocation based upon number of students, if his number of students are a little lower, therefore his budget amount will be. Uh, number three, uh, this is. Yes, go ahead.
So, you have, I see in, in, like, the intermediate copier, what about the copier itself? What is that called?
Copy machines.
Copy machines. This is coded to the building. We don't have leases on top of them, we don't have leases on copy machines anymore, we just kind of. So, they don't, they don't have credit that much. So, for example, if the intermediate copier bites the dust, that, that building has to have money for its budget.
What we do is we try to track, because we need to know if we're paying copy overages, which building is reading all paper and the overages that we have to send to the copy company. So that's why, even though we're coding each building, Mr. Reed now is not in charge of dealing with the copy machine lease, which are not leases, but the payment.
What we use.
Maintenance.
We knew you had leases.
We had leases.
We used to have leases on them, yeah.
Correct.
We've been trying to buy them in the search.
Well, I know one of the copiers in the intermediate.
Kathy had something in her budget to replace. I don't know if you didn't know how.
It was month to date, no.
Okay.
Hopefully, understand, like, I don't know. Who's the seller of the primary budget, the primary's?
Yes.
And so with the, did they have an opportunity to revise that?
Yes.
Or did they have to work with, like?
They, the mounts, the mounts.
How did that work? I just have a.
Typically, when you come in as a building principal, you're not really changing the max. Because you're gonna, you're gonna say, I think it's going, how it's ever been flowing, and then determine, hey, I need to reallocate here. Um, but typically, they don't change until their second year. But they do have the ability to do budget transfers, approved by Kelly in the set. Okay? Uh, the question was about student activities and charity accounts. Uh, two different accounts, how's money raised for the students, and where does the charity money come from?
Um, they are two separate accounts. They have a separate charity account from their regular student account. Um, I talked to the parents afternoon, and that charity account money comes from, he said, a free flame, which the faculty work, and then donations. And he said, it was very clear about any donations, but that is what that is for.
So the charity is.
For this building, so.
It might be shoes or coats or.
Yeah.
Lost load.
Paying ones or, not paying ones, but what some kind of.
They helped pay, in the past, they helped pay kids, pay off kids' account money that were still. And they had to, how we further all and.
Right.
It's not necessarily the nebula.
Yes.
In the past, but they could, it's. Uh, the next question, question four was a great question, and Mrs. Harzke picked this up, and we're gonna point it out to you. Elementary and primary, do they have staff mileage and put them in their budget? It's a great question. He asks, why do staff members need mileage? Well, because you, we have staff members that travel in between buildings. Uh, that do different jobs. For example, we have a staff member that will be coming from the high school over to the Monday Center to teach math class. Therefore, you compensate mileage. Process coordinators, if they have to drive and contest in different buildings or, or bad specialists, if they have to go from building to building, and they're using their personal vehicles in the district phase, mileage. Our tech people go building to building if they use the technology makers, so therefore, there's no mileage included. To answer the question, uh, in the past, it's happened here, we, the primaries really can't take a first grade teacher and send them to each other.
They don't travel.
They don't travel. So that's why people see some mileage in buildings, but not in all buildings. And I, I believe, uh, we might have had one sped, um, person that might have trailed out of elementary years past. But that was back in a few years.
And homebound is quoted as a separate line item, you know.
And everyone knows about homebound, right? A student for some, has medical reasons, they can't come to school, the teacher goes out to see them and helps educate them. Next question, came up question for five, was, was high school projects need to wait fees? What are these types?
Um, we pay program participation fees to end news for these programs. Um, I look back fifteen years, total, information in three thousand of the high schools, seven fifty, if you might participate in those programs.
Okay, right. Um, the next one was the library. How come does the principal not budget the library? And the answer is, when Kelly has her get togethers, when we do our budget workshops with the staff, they bring the libraries. Libraries are given an amount, and basically, they create their own little budget based upon numbers, feed that through the principal, and then Kelly allocates that as requested. Other teaching supplies, bond sets, they'll control.
Basically, that's just supplies, like office supplies for the teachers, pen, censers, highlighters, right, marker, all that stuff. On it, does also include things like printer cartridges, um, chairs and desks, if they're just buying them like pizza meals. It's actually a supply, it's not capital, so that would be instead of lesson plan books, um, copy paper, not, not the regular copy paper, but colored copy paper. They order leaves of colored paper for some special thing. Chromebook, finished by one or two, it's two hundred and fifty dollars. They're not fixing those, it's great, so that would be supplied. Um, and projected balls, so. It's kind of a sampling of the things that runs through the.
And.
The people have to budget for just keep it sometimes, that office that.
Um, question, uh, number, what's it, eight? We handed out to you and emailed that to you. Um, I hate to speak on camera to this, but evidently Kelly did request Eddie's narrative and Eddie did send it, but it was maliciously omitted. Yeah, it was an oversight, so we sent that to you, and we handed it out to you tonight. It is a narrative for athletics and activities. Um, and I, I actually appreciate this is all she's catching at, because we did. All right, um, maintenance, school duty, what is that? Um, great school duty.
It's a word of our system. Uh, that tells the teachers actually, will extend that information what they need repaired. It's a web-based program, you can pay for it based on your student count. And, um, it tells what they need repaired. Yes, the school duty is the system of great. So for, for. We are, we, just so you know, we are planning on working with technology a little bit better this year. Now we have Aaron, uh, aboard. Uh, he can get the software program written, uh, that'll actually, rather than, he and Murray had one, but could not find it as he left at this rate. So we couldn't add on with, like, technology, as they, as they. Probably this year, he's a great software.
Um, all right, so money's been allocated to high school improvement, so if you turn, um.
Or to the back of the.
Go to, uh, foot year expenditures tab. Kelly doesn't have any numbers. Which one?
They have sixteen under expenditures.
So if you look at thirty sixteen expenditures, they're gonna stay alive, and it says, high school. Kind of hit there, I'm gonna do a new job turn of page.
The best way to identify it is, so the far right and the numbers, I mean, the far right column.
So the question was, how come you have money in high school building improvements, but none of the rest of them should not be worked there for the buildings? That's a great catch, because we do that specific projects in specific buildings, and that helps us track what we do. For example, when we did the ceiling project at the primary, there had been a line item in primary. This helps Kelly track what's going on with each particular building, and we can look back under this line item to the past two or three years and say, well, have we done to, uh, the primary building, how it had COVID, we pull up historically. So it just helps us track. Now, that doesn't mean things aren't being done. For example, we have asphalt repairs around the district going on, other building things that are happening, but these are just the big ticket items that allow us to track what's happening in each individual building. Uh, projected balances was another great question. Uh, if you look, look back to three tabs, to the budget summary, you'll see what we highlighted in yellow. That's all, that's where people normally fear their eyes. How much money we gonna end with and how much money we starting with? And one of the questions was when we, and Mrs. Harzke, I was super, but we talked about, you know, we haven't really got to spend this year. Talk, talk to me about why that looks that way. So I, I'll give you some numbers of what the final budget was in fifteen sixteen, was thirteen, four, five. Uh, Dan would said, hey, where are we gonna start the sixteen, seventeen year budget? And he said, ten, six. And Kelly, then her final budget amendment, well, not final, but past budget amendment, was fifteen, fifteen. So when she talks about how we budget, and we both had the same belief here, and when we build budgets, it's, we wanna overestimate expenditure and underestimate, we're in the worst case scenario, if we had to spend all of this stuff, what would be the end of it? And what lies at hand is, you're, you wanna not spend all that. So your budget flips over to where you have more money coming in than what's going out. So our hope is that, of course, that twelve, four, eight is gonna be fifteen, thirteen, twelve. You, you wanna do it all up, not down. So, uh, and you see the end fifteen, fifteen there on that page, and projected twelve, forty eight. Now, when you do read this budget, it does on the face look like your deficit's spending, you're spending more than you're bringing in. But as you can see, historically, it's been the same way. All right, uh, expenditures by object, there was a question, I asked John something.
I wanna say it's true, it's really skewed this year because of bond money.
Right, thank you.
So, I mean, it's, bond money is not reflected in those projected balances, that yellow lines above. But if you look over to the right on the total, you'd be like, whoa, we started here twenty-three thousand, and we're gonna end here seventy million, yeah, we got this expense. That's bond money, because that's the total. If you look in the bond issue column, you can see, I mean, I just, I mean, I guess, because we don't even know what we're doing yet. So I really just guess. Um, but that does not affect our final balance.
No, that's in and out. It's in and out, what you, what you're spending, you have money to cover, it's in and out. Uh, okay, uh, expenditures by object, and this is a question, is there a line that shows the amount allocated to the total of all teachers these days and all were paid half? And I, I told Mrs. Harzke, one is a great question, two, the answer's hell. Um, it's called an unfunded line of bills. Now, Kelly talked about it in audit.
The auditors have to report on that, they have to disclose that in our, um, audit report. And that's what I was sitting there looking for, when we started talking, um, five hundred and sixteen thousand. We had to pay, you know, we had to hit every single day, outstanding.
Five hundred and sixteen thousand. So, and that will be in every audit report, pretty close to the same page historically. Um, their job is to look at that again. That's not something that districts can budget for. Are you budget five hundred and sixteen thousand, you wouldn't wanna spend it. It would be hard to budget for that each, each year. We do a sort of look at where our payouts are, for our teachers that hit over one thirty, one fifty, one fifty, how many days will be bottom bad? Potential having leave, retire, and we're buying their days, so we try to estimate if that's a can there. All right, um, do we have a total number of employees listed in the budget? No, we do not. We just have an overall amount of what people cost us. I asked John how we could get that number, and if we could incorporate maybe in our budget message, if we have X amount of employees, uh, in the district this year, and we average right at five hundred, four ninety-eight. It, it fluctuates, and the reason it fluctuates is because sometimes people leave you that are hourly employees. When you drop a person, and you wait to hire them back, so you have to go back up there. So, for example, prior to the night, we would've been about three people less than what if you just hired in. So it's kind of a moving target at times. When, when we're fully staffed, we're around four ninety-eight. We have about two hundred and forty-seven teachers here, three forty-seven, two sixty-two, two hundred and sixty-two teachers, and the rest are support staff, bus drivers, et cetera. Uh, graduation expenses, what does this include? Why? Because it looks pretty complex, and you're talking about, uh, everything from printing. Because it looks pretty high and you're talking about, uh, everything from printing the bookshelves.
Printing the long ones.
Bring the long ones.
Renting chairs.
Chairs, the music, the sound.
The sound, which.
Any lowers they have on stage unless the kids purchase those.
Yeah, they try, they try to have a few of those. Oh, the flower thing, yeah.
And, um, the administration, actually, we got a talk, myself, Melissa, John, Dr. Freeman, initial conversations of, what, what graduation looks like in the future, those are schools. We continue using field, we. After. Cut some music out, make sure. Uh, we, we talked about that, but we actually really primarily focusing on where we were heading. Are we gonna continue heading here?
Because we pay a deposit to debtco to hold it and you're not gonna let them have, you know, and how much is that deposit? Seventeen hundred dollars.
Seventeen, just to hold it.
So that, that, oh, that's, that's not anything we've ever really discussed, is cost of, what's it cost us to hold it here versus this, the road out of college?
Maybe that's one thing that's, that's exactly what I talked with Kathy about, hey, we're supposed to be sound people because they have a sound system. Yeah, you know, can we have our sound people run it? What, they set up the chairs, they set up the chairs, well, we have, we have to provide additional, um, parking attendance. We have to supply that, so what we can cost there is we don't have that now. We have shuttles, we shuttle parents, I don't know if we would need that. We didn't have as many this year, we, we struggled with the folks that were interested in helping us out. But yes, you're right, we normally have two to three additional, two to three additional workers, right? That help with the little lights and, uh, but that is a topic of discussion. And, uh, one of the things is, yes, that's an administrative decision, until you get upset about a hundred parents whose kids are gonna be first class, they don't stand on the field at Hillsborough.
However, speaking from somebody who's gone to graduate, she took the college, they're not fun.
Oh, I, that's.
They are not fun.
Not fun.
Because of the traffic issues, I mean, traffic gets bad here, but it's even more time created there. And being in the gym, with air, it is not fun.
And you know, it's just a smallish, it's a tiny huge dollar difference, I think it was a nice visit there, but.
Exactly, and that's why we have the whole, I think the debacle of the early, late nineties, I think it was the early two thousands.
Oh, what was the debacle?
Um, the rain hit and everyone moved inside. And what wound up happening was parents could didn't see the kids graduating, we had interactive television, it went out and so parents were sitting out in the commons and couldn't see the kids. And that's when the board at that time said, you're gonna have an Auburn flip.
And we continue the whole, we're here, we are gonna be for field.
Correct. And I did move back, Mr. Mario apologized because it was a cross, it was like fourteen.
It wouldn't, I mean, well, we tried, we tried to play local, but.
Well, we can talk about, hey, should we look at some type of covering system for, for field? Uh, and Mrs. Welker, at the meeting, we talked about, okay, banning high heels shoes.
Oh, banning, but the, the chairs were, even when you are.
We talked about letting down, we used it with gray, about to do with plywood, maybe F band green, but you're talking more banning.
So we will be able to do what happened, but again, on that field, right, because I saw the chairs coming up and I was like.
We're getting to the chairs.
Oh, and so the other chairs will be okay?
We hope, because the chair is supposed to have a rounded bottom instead of.
I would think the high heels, if they're gonna wear high heels, they have to have the protection, they have, like, the walking high heels.
Oh, you should, most of them have like windshield. Those girls are doing just fine, I was just like, here comes another one.
And, and this is for me, hey, just walk around the spot shoes, and I said, yeah, but you're strictly the way over the bottom of your foot rather than on the spot of your heel. And, and which causes, and it is, basically, it's forcing the, the rock out and losing pivot. That's what happened. It's not so much I'm poking hole in the turf, because the turf already had drunk holes in it.
It'd be fun, we can have a guard that just did, everybody takes a shoe off and cares if they're a.
Oh, yeah, too. All right, the, the last one was the high school principal, when, when I used to run our graduations in Washington, uh, events of Washington. We had, uh, rented special platforms with all, and, uh, overture, different types of fabrics that went over there. The board, turban, your grass, protect it. I didn't know that, hey. Oh, there's someone. She had dance floors, you put play over the grass and have a good party.
Sounds cheap.
So we see graduation calls go in the wrong direction.
Yeah, that's, that's, but I, I, I feel like that's a good discussion.
Well, I understand the board, you have a huge investment over there, you got a great blessing, and you want it to run as long as you can. Uh, so that's administratively, we're gonna try to work out what we can. Because here's the part, if you have a kid that's gone twelve years of Hillsborough and they don't get to graduate on their field. And for some of you, that's the only time they could touch that field, I mean, if it's a P E class, they don't participate in sports. Kind of bummer, but you know, it is what it is and we'll, we'll work through that. Our last question that we had, um, sent to us was, high school principal travel, it seems a little high compared to other travel, and just homebound included. And we discussed, that travel also pays for the administrators that have to go to the wing, away dangers. And back when I played ball, you know, the eighteen, eighteen played at the same place. Got home late and took one bus and all crammed on. But now we have going all directions, multiple sports. So that travel is higher because of coverage administrative costs, issues, uh, uh, expects all varsity level contests to have an administrator on it. Um, so that's why you see an increase in cost here. Uh, that now, what, any other questions we can answer? And then I've been asked by an administrator to get some clarification from the board.
I have a question, I'm gonna probably, because I did not find that school works that's relaxed in the. On the primary works of textbooks, do you consider the math textbooks? Does, I'm assuming that is only the printing aspect, that does not include the paracross that usually they have.
That often includes what they are.
So actually, that would be.
I said, it's no salary.
I have one more question, really not enough, but, um, I mean, the primary has a lot, they're consumables, like their math sheets, and the fact that they print themselves. We are not violating any.
No, they made sure that they got those, right, and they, they have to copy those now because we're gonna negotiate a math book, uh, essential action, we negotiate a certain number of years, but we do those fifteen books. We have to approach our math books and, and, and that's what we're gonna do now, that's what we're gonna do.
All right, um, I was asked, uh, to give clarity on fundraising. And the question was, can you please give clarity from the board, I think is exactly. Uh, fundraising money for staff incentives, example, staff shirts. What's the board's position on utilizing fundraisers money, this is me kinda elaborating. Fundraise money on staff incentives, such as staff shirts.
Who's doing the, I don't know.
Some of the building budget is for staff shirts, though.
Correct.
So.
That's out of activity accounts. Correct. So the question is, and going back to fundraisers, and I know we had quite a long talk on, if students raise the money, the money should be spent on kids. Unless it is on the front end notified, what's the money we can use for other than kids? So is that still, I think the question is, is it okay to spend the money on staff shirts if on the front end they're notifying, we're spending the money on staff shirts, we're spending the money on kids' bouncy houses or whatever. Because I know the KU fundraiser, a lot goes into student incentives. It's a little bit odd, so. I understand, but the question is, staff shirts, is it okay to buy staff shirts if they send the money? If they notify what they're raising the money for? I think's the question, right?
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that. Why do people know what they're donating money for? Why would that be a problem? Or is it because we don't like to be asking people for?
No, in the past, we, the fundraiser didn't say, like on the football card.
Yeah.
On the football card, it just said, football.
Yeah.
We're raising money for football, so now what they're doing is we're praying something on the bottom that says, I can't remember. The proceeds from this fundraiser were benefited.
To support the mission.
Mission and vision of the Hillsborough Football Program and.
See, to me, I, I do have, I wanna know where my money is coming, if I'm donating to something. And I really think if it says that, like, it's gonna go to teachers, then it shouldn't be a problem. But when you say, when you just said on the bottom of a football card, I get, I get funny about that because it's like, what does that mean?
Well, I sure say that football player.
Could that be the football coach's vacation because he wants to relax more? I mean, you know, you, as, but it is still my donated money, so I just don't donate.
You can't name everything, you get into that great abyss of, the entire cards can be taken up with breakfast football players or feeding, uh, dinner to football players, it's gonna, that's the key question.
But as long as it's kids, as long as it's kids, if they're going to the activity fund and the money's spent on kids, I don't think it matters.
What it's for.
Exactly, as long as it's for the kids.
The question came up that, the, the, the question came up that a fundraiser last year, um, shirts, I mean, a forty-dollar shirt was purchased for the staff, uh, all employees in the building. I believe it was the football, bought t-shirts for the teachers to wear on Friday to support the football program and encourage the board. And it came out of the fundraiser. So that's a shirt bought for a staff member that was paid for out of the fundraiser.
I think, that sounds like, I could, people would complain about that. Did it come from the football team or did it come from the booster group?
It, it didn't come from the boosters, but here's the issue that we're running into. And it appears, we need to come up with a way to put this on all funds. Because, you know, Kelly, each program has that activity account, each building has that activity account. What we can't do is start making five different subsidiary accounts. Or we're gonna have more time with people allocating, okay, this deposit's going for here, this deposit's going for here. Oh, my money was supposed to go in there. And so, we need to come up with a way that we can announce to everyone that there is a potential for it to be spent elsewhere. And how to do that alone.
How, I, you know, the, I, I keep going back to that, the whole thing with, um, the issue we had with the.
Staff member?
Yes, right.
Right.
And, and now we got a, uh, an actual recommendation from Calenda on that.
Correct.
What does she feel about this? I mean, because to me, I don't see the difference.
What I, what I just said to you, just didn't put it at the bottom of the card.
Okay, so she's saying that as long as we tell everyone, I'm gonna do that.
And then as long as it's a favorite, that's, that's where that gray area comes.
So.
If we have buildings that are already budgeted for shirts and are already being.
Because they're taking out some of their building budget.
Okay.
Rather than other buildings, it not coming out there specifically. Some, people said that some buildings are already budgeted for staff shirts, some aren't. And as they're.
Not their instructional money.
Right, yeah.
I don't want them.
They're budgeting it, but they're talking about how are they raising money to pay for it? You know, for example, the primary, or she's in elementary, the principal had a staff fundraiser where they bought shirts. And you use that money to help buy stuff for Christmas and send it to the staff for Christmas to cover the cost.
The staff generated.
Correct, so we get back to the point of. Say that's giving up.
Provide their own.
Provide their own shirts. Here's the issue. Correct. When you take the staff money, that they fundraise, you take the students' money that they fundraise, and you put it in your building activity account. You combing the money. Now, my point is, if we start making all these subsidiary accounts, it's gonna be a big problem. So we need to come up with a way to disclaimer that everyone knows where our fundraising covers for.
I have a question for you, if you say there's an instructional budget, they weren't doing shirts, it's characters. Some of, any one thousand level accounts, so like if you listed the account numbers and it starts with a one thousand, that's instructional. Anything with, um, two thousand, it's just work. What would this, is this kind of staff teacher? Probably that's crazy. I don't, I don't know. They just.
So how, how far would it be that? You know, we've got that student activity fund over here, we don't wanna pop those two together. I mean, Kelly, you would think of this too, how far would it be to just have that teacher activity?
Yeah, staff activity.
Staff activity. You know, I mean, that, that way, they're staying separate.
The problem becomes when you have football, buying stuff, it's a festival, it's have all these different levels of groups doing that same thing on.
Because I think football, that's about, they have shirts for everybody.
An extra count in one building?
They're gonna have soccer, bands, everyone, any of those activities would have another account. She had to create an account for every activity plus another building account, plus the parking.
Well, then they have to track around. Is it reasonable that they should have this new shirt?
I mean, I mean, why were they buying, I mean, I, I remember being there.
Why was the shirt applied?
If, yeah, I mean, if, if, if you wanted a football shirt, you bought it. And the proceeds with the football program, if you wanted a basketball shirt, you bought it and the proceeds with the football program. So what, why are we doing that? Why are we buying this for them? I mean, if we've got that money, why would this work fit? And, you know, maybe, maybe instead of buying shirts for all the staff, that's another couple of things.
If the coaches wanna buy shirts for the staff, the coaches can buy the shirts for the staff. What about staff shirts at the beginning of the year?
That's a good question, I thought that's what this was about.
It's all illegal.
I guess, I guess, I'm, why can't they buy their? Right, I thought maybe we'd be very.
Well, there are those, I mean, I've got a good deal with, I guess, a limited period now, thank you.
And what boils down to this, it's also, you have to be saying that from the administrator's perspective is about, that the teacher goes along, I mean, the teacher being appreciated. The teacher goes a long way with saying, here's a staff shirt, you're a member of our staff, you belong here, you want to here, it's a morale thing. And teachers feel appreciated, just wear a shirt, wear on G Friday or, or H Friday. They have some, because some of these staff members come in, might be new teachers, they have not received a check yet, a Friday comes up and they're left out. I mean, there's girls that come on some both sides. They're all, they're all unified, they're all, they're all teams, they're all family.
What's your, on a t-shirt topic, every year our kids are asked to buy t-shirts for the crowd, the parents are asked to pay for that. Um, what happens to the kids who just can't pay for that? The shirt, that's how the shirt, so, and then, and then does the teacher buy her own t-shirt for that yearly t-shirt? Because that's, that's every year. Because I'm tired of buying them every year. I teach for my kids. Creative and, you know, mine's made of white and purple and it was different colors every year. You got to wear, no, I never buy them every year.
Well, there's.
One, yeah.
And so we did the same thing every year.
Oh, well, how do you? We're staying here.
Why don't we do something similar then, with the staff and have a, a single staff shirt? Staff shirt that like in Lisa's case, she didn't buy one every year, this way we're only buying for the new people that come on board. You understand what, because everybody else has theirs already. I, I mean.
Well, I know, in the intermediate, we'd be giving out some equipment or at teacher appreciation or the beginning of the year, the welcome back type thing. And that was the time to give the new teachers their shirts. And, you know, shirts wear out and styles change.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, I think.
I mean, I don't care about buy, I mean, it sounds great, I think if they have been sent on there, if it says your fundraising dollars are going to buy the teacher's t-shirt, I feel like that's okay, but it does open up a big channel one. I think the re-mission and vision.
Do, do you know how much money, do you know how much money is going to a church?
Couple hundred bucks or whatever.
A year? So, so what if it just? And then, they be building, they be building a budget for church. Then you didn't have to worry about the fundraising, they got a budget, and then the principal, like, well, she can, you know, with football and. And then the principal, like, well, she can, you know, with football and the choir and all the different.
It doesn't have to be every year.
No. One is the, one is, we assume that as part of our budget. That the board provides, that the board provides a shirt.
Right. Which is what I think they were talking about on this side of the table, that they just, they're, put it in their budgets and they allocated for the shirts.
You know, do it one, seven, three, five years.
Right, and add extras.
And add new people come in, they get them.
Right. But not have a shirt for basketball and a shirt for basketball and a shirt for track.
You do buy all those.
Yeah. But, but I mean, I don't take those programs either.
Right, you don't have them, but like you said, you take them by.
He just said, we're talking, like, a couple hundred bucks.
It's from the shirts.
And then I think, what we're gonna do is bring this back to you, we're actually not, and, yeah, but here's the thing. Here's the next monkey wrench. What about the big staff lunch, you can do a Christmas. That's where that money comes from. Student activity account. Now, here's the thing. Selinda was.
We have tried to do T V, and most of us.
Yeah. We try to bring to work, it is, you have to, something instructional going on has to be school related to have, like a working lunch. And after the lunch, if you wanna do your gift exchange or what they call it, pink elf, white elf and gift stuff and whatever. Uh, but, uh, so that's another, another thing.
So, if you're raising money to feed the teachers as well?
No, not, no, not in this day.
They're doing work.
They're working T V.
Oh, okay, okay.
But to get your phone in, when the student fundraiser money and staff raised.
As a parent, when I see fundraising, I'm assuming it's for the students. I am to the program for the student, everybody acts as the general perception, I never been a parent. Yeah, but if you're seeing teachers, you probably. I mean, I don't know, I can see it go both ways.
Oh, but a lot of buildings do. So, students are all, they feed themselves.
We did that at our hall. We, we order out, we, everybody brings stuff and celebrate birthdays.
Talking about feeding, I mean, we knew that that's the amount of money that's spent on feeding, huh? That kind of carry, I mean, sometimes it's well over two hundred dollars a month.
I mean, what we can do is say, you know, purchase food back. Cause that's a cost.
Well, like when you go to their.
When you're preparing bread, that's a cost. When they make you a pot of stroganoff, it's not, I'm, I'm a best, I'm not. So, I can put that stuff. We just like to be variety, we don't want to.
I think that's fair.
I mean, what, I just hate putting in that.
I don't think we can compare it to the, the teachers, because you don't get much syrup on the board. We do feed you a little bit.
What do you mean?
We're gonna double the salary and run that way.
You got this for me.
All fat are telling you.
We, we, we put on the agenda, it's part of the discussion, or at least we tell everybody you're not buying staff anything out of student fundraising.
Oh, gee, that does sound silly, right? Well, I, I.
Well, you can't, that can be both ways though, I gotta have a.
I mean, we have a budget as a board, right? Can't, can't, I'm serious, can't really budget for a shirt for everybody at the beginning of the year. Um, you know, but like, but all these individual shirts, if they want one, does they, what is the part of the ball?
Right, and they could buy a football shirt.
They could buy a basketball shirt, but we as a board maybe could, you know, make sure that history's wide. Everybody gets a shirt and like, well, that's good.
Well, it doesn't have to be a thirty five or forty dollar shirt.
No, the ones I like best was the twenty old, ten dollar t-shirt. And I still wear.
Well, but they did.
You were on the, you were getting around ten, fifteen, yeah.
Right, and we could do that.
All we're doing by itself is thirty five, forty, but it's.
Well, we, I wore shirts for thirty five bucks.
He was the one who said, yeah, there was some.
You were.
There were about four hundred, four hundred shirts.
We got them.
And, you know, you go shooting pretty where the board, they're.
Right.
I mean, there's. And if you're going another year, it needs to be like that.
You wanna amend your budget for pre-pretend your budget?
No, yes.
But, as a teacher, I didn't need a shirt.
No, I didn't, I mean.
I mean, some, I mean, you don't.
I, I, all I know is, one of my goals was to. We want to talk around and, you know, that is, put her around. I just want all of you to know that.
It will.
T-shirt, go a long.
And I don't want to say, the problem with them having the t-shirt is just where we're getting the money for, for, um, just. I just, like, like, cause when I buy, and I buy those football cards every single year, and I don't think I'm buying them to clothe the staff. You know?
What about clothing the coach? Does it come down to that money too?
I think I would ask, don't.
You know, but you guys, if you're on a football team, you want your coach to have a shirt on, and I think that is part of going for the kids. They wanna have their coach looking at the teacher. I don't know, I, I guess.
Well, I mean, Eddie's gonna do something different with that next year.
I mean, Kelly, the coaching gear, whatever, isn't excessive, is it? I know, cause like a basketball is.
Well, I.
Why, why you word excessive? Cause you might get a shirt, you might get a shirt and turf, coaching shoes, jerseys.
Every year?
And we have different coaches, shirt, shoes and.
Well, they can't be on the turf. And they sure don't make a lot of money doing that, I don't know.
But you're talking.
We opened.
But it's not everyone's talking about just the basket coach. You know, I'm gonna have a, a blue, a black and a white. He's not gonna have special shoes, I mean, football is the most expensive sport, all the way around. The uniforms, helmets, the, I mean, I don't think we can pay a woman in the mouth for an extra reading person, and there's a ton of them that gotta pay for it and stuff.
The coach kind of part of the team?
Right.
Yeah, the coach is more in the team.
So, you consider that a uniform?
I, I would consider, I would consider, I mean, cause that you, you have to be able to distinguish the coach from a, 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 a self that is not the coach.
So, this is what I'm hearing, I wanna.
You can't say some abuse of the system, that's what I, no, okay.
Absolutely not.
Well, now, I just don't feel like this.
It is not enough use of the system.
Staff members all having the same shirt with their building and building, on field trips or whatever, it is a way to identify.
I mean, you're talking about, that fundraiser, literally, generates ten thousand?
For cookies, I mean, promises.
Ten hundred dollars, and you're spending two hundred of it to buy a teacher's shirt. And you're spending nine thousand, eight hundred on kids.
For food.
I guarantee that every teacher. And the mountain house and the goat pantry thing. Every teacher in that building spends more than that ten dollars.
Buying cookie dough.
Buying cookie dough itself.
I couldn't tell you how.
And staying late and helping pass it out and, and, and all that.
I, if, if we're gonna do that, then I just think that we're really, that if we made it on those fundraiser cards or whatever. Just so people know.
Well, has there, what issues have been brought up other than from this group?
Has any parent ever complained? It's probably because they don't realize that they're.
Fun, that's worth it.
Yeah.
So, I'm assuming this is coming from when we saw in the bu- in the budget, a staff member's name and this money was going to the staff member.
That's what started all of all.
That's what started all.
Because the, the.
Because it didn't work for us.
The, the coaches gave money.
Yes, right.
For the fundraiser. And I hundred percent agree that wasn't the right way to do it.
Right.
But I also understand that the time we shut that down, the student lost his grandfather and the dean couldn't buy flowers for him. Because they, we, then we went with the benevolence type funds and, you know, had money for the benevolence and, and what they didn't have. So, our perspective is, we're just trying to figure out.
We did that.
We wanna make sure we're doing the right thing and we're following through with sports, which, that's all in the U T N. If it means, on, on the football fundraiser cards, clearly say, so fortunately, these fun, uh fundraiser monies will go to purchasing staff shirts. And that's all we're doing.
So, high school teachers get a staff shirt from their building principal, then they get a staff shirt from, from the football team, and then they get a staff shirt from the band.
That's a fine standard shirt. I'm talking a fifty, four dollar cotton.
T-shirt.
The beauty of these, like a t-shirt. Yeah.
They get one of these from, from their building principal.
They get shirts.
They get one. Okay, Kim Dooley's building got one, just like. I agree with you. High school staff does not get, some buildings do get these, high schools not. I was gonna say about that.
We don't wanna get them a shirt. Right on the high school, the nice shirt.
I don't know, I can't speak to that.
Oh.
You know, Renaissance shirt, don't you, Eddie?
Well, the high schools. Uh, the high schools, they, Renaissance t-shirts, that Renaissance, I don't know, it's on the staff, like, this year we saw the star scores shirts that the teachers wore, like during the Renaissance, some of the things like that. Uh, the high schools typically doesn't do the polos or anything like that. Uh, we did it about three or four years ago. Um, as we move forward, it's gonna happen again, just happen, it doesn't happen every year.
How do you take care of this, the Renaissance shirts? You know where that comes from?
It's a Renaissance, uh, it's a combination, I believe, of Renaissance font and a high school, um, miscellaneous account.
How's the money, how's the money raised for that Renaissance program? Bags of shirts? How's the money raised for bags of shirts?
I, I don't know. Renaissance does, Renaissance does, uh, Brentford fundraisers, they do Dallas fundraiser, they do.
What are the kids raising the funds?
Or do they go, uh, parents are going to the restaurant and whatever percentage is raised at night, that's the money.
That is correct.
So, the kids aren't out selling.
Correct.
Parents are going, or they are going.
I heard Paul, he's not even talking about it.
Yeah.
Alright, so what I'm hearing is this, the board's okay with the buildings not going over, getting their staff a shirt. And, you know, proceeds from student fundraisers are going, goes toward purchasing staff shirts, not coaches shirts, staff shirts. It needs to be clearly labeled on cards.
Or on the fundraiser.
Or on emergency paper, every time.
Yep.
How is it that they're stated?
Well, I think what you just said was, unfortunately, these proceeds, however, may go towards a little bit higher than the whole. I mean, I have to probably wait a bit.
The proceeds may go toward purchasing staff shirts.
On average.
Or to support staff expenses or something.
I'm just curious, with the coaching staff being a part of the team, what are they provided as far as clothing?
Coach, shoes, and not all of them, football, let me look at basketball.
Right, just on average.
Go ahead, Ed, can we talk about, you know, what?
So, typically with every, every sport you're looking at, usually, what, you, you have a football consultancy?
Uh, either way, football, basketball.
I'll go, I'll give you a comparison between two people. Football is one of our largest, we have twelve staff members for football. Typically for football, they usually get polo, maybe they get shorts or pants, shoes, uh, visor or a hat, something of that nature. Typically, I believe, if I go through and I look, we probably spend around twenty five hundred to three thousand dollars on coaches gear for football. But that's because there's. That's correct, this is just so big.
Right.
Probably average around two hundred, two hundred fifty dollars per coach in gear, once it's all set, you have rain gear, you have all kinds of things for the elements of weather. Let's go to, uh, let's say basketball. Basketball, they do, um, three polos each, a red and gray, a red, a white, a blue, just include what they, so your costume is very much. Volleyball, they like dry fit, long sleeve shirts. Uh, maybe they'll do shoes as well, something of that nature. Uh, my goal, whenever we sign our I D S contract, and it will start this year, is that I, I am more comfortable with us buying a staff member a t-shirt than I am outfitting our coaches with fundraiser money by our kids. That's just my perspective. Uh, so my goal with our I D S money is, you know, we get, we get our promo money for however much we spend, we get a certain percentage back that we've been used by items. My goal started this year, when we found our promo money is in July, cause that is the money we will use to help our coaches. And our kids' fundraiser money will no longer go towards, uh, outfitting our coaches, it'll go, it'll go towards the kids, which is where it should be going. I don't think any of us is married to that. Um, so, once we get that, I'll sit down and I'll look at it, and then I'll allocate each coach a certain amount, and then whatever we could have money, if it's left over or whatnot, maybe use that for office staff, maybe a polo, or, you know, do something like that, just little things like that.
Why does a football coach need special pants? Does he have pants and, I see, I get the shoes for the turf, but what's the other pants? Special color?
They just have a uniform. That's, I mean, that.
I just don't even notice professional football coaches having, uh, matching pants.
A lot of, a lot of college, professionals, and, I'd say during the high schools, I'll, I'll do that.
Well, and then, you know, sometimes games are ninety degrees and sometimes they're, what, five degrees?
Oh, yeah, that's true, that, that, the, the, what, track, track may do a, uh, they may do, um, athletic shorts, like a mesh short and a, a short sleeve t-shirt and a long sleeve t-shirt. Or they may do a polo as well, it just depends, it, it's, uh, it varies all over depending on what they are and what they're wearing. Some, some don't require much, some require more. So, how would you, it's nothing that.
It's just, I guess, I guess if I was a volleyball coach and all I got was one long sleeve t-shirt and then I, and that money was ten dollars. And then I could look at football coach and, and then know that the school, right, fundraising or whatever, is spending two hundred and fifty per coach. It kind of makes you, it make you think, I could use that money somewhere else in my budget too, so I wonder if, I mean, I guess I'm just asking.
But volleyball and football, they're all raising their own.
So, okay, so.
So, it's, it's not, this isn't budget money, so, I, this is raised funds by each individual. So, when I talk accounts, I will talk like activity account, budget account. Yeah. So, and when I say activity account, activity account is all fundraiser account, that's all the money that that individual program is generating itself. What they're, through their fundraises, through, through this, that, the other, however they're raising their money, that's where their money goes in their activity. Their activity money is then what they use to buy the different things. So, it's not like we're budgeting three thousand dollars for football to get outfitted and only a hundred dollars for volleyball outfit. That is, that is absolutely not the case. They all, basketball, as I said, when they all purchase their own individual, what they deem fit for that. Now, if anything ever came across me that's, and it was excessive, I, I would never let it get out of hand or be something crazy. We, we do basically the norm and, and what I think we've done for years, even before I was a flag director and even before the coaches were getting placed or coaching. I think it's something that has always taken place, going back to when I was in high school, I can remember all my coaches, Coach Johan, our coach former, Coach Z, Eric, you can probably remember, they all had blue shorts, gray t-shirt, and then on game nights, they had, they actually had pants that had a hawk embroidered on them. And that was their game outfit. I mean, it goes back to ninety six, but they were, they were doing that. It's just, it's what we do, I guess.
There's even small cap, I suppose, the coaches are more in security, you know, you just need to know who your coaches are.
Absolutely.
And, and if they're dressed in a, I mean, in a standard manner, then you're gonna know there.
And, and I would say that as far as what we spend per sport on coaches apparel, we're not, we, we're right in the middle. There are schools that spend way more than we ever dreamed of, and there are schools that don't get to spend as much as we. And I think it depends on your side and how that all works. As far as doing anything excessive or crazy, I, I don't feel we're doing any of that, I think we're right in line.
Well, I, I still think the coaches are part of the team, they have, have a uniform and gear as well.
Yeah, the, the, the question gets to.
How much?
How are we gonna buy, everybody in high school a bottle of, of shirt, that's fundraiser money? And, the only way to do that is if it sits for a lot of money.
Got a question. Hello, our maintenance department were asking, um, who outfits you, Ray, or your team?
We, we do it ourselves for our.
And then your buddy?
Oh, yeah, I don't last year, that you did that one. But I, I just think.
Nope. I don't feel like it.
Things like. Our assistants and O'Shea are like, our department realizes heavily on maintenance.
Right.
Feel, so this, I mean, it, it's a, it's a give and take. So, last year, I think I bought all of his staff, uh, navy blue shirt, a pocket and the hawks logo on the back that said maintenance on the bottom. And I mean.
They also have this with the, the custodians, and they have, where they just put staff on that.
Yeah.
So, they're recognizable with the same color in that building.
And that was our goal, in the high school, we bought, the, the activities department bought the custodians, just a royal blue t-shirt. And it's, like you said, it had hawks on the front and on the back, it had a big H, and underneath it, it's like custodians, you know, they're usually identified.
But it came out of activity money?
Mm-hmm.
Why, why shouldn't we as a district be, I mean, cause I think the, the maintenance staff needs to identify.
And you've bought those in the past.
Yes.
They have bought them in the past.
Okay. Okay.
We've done that.
But, I mean, but we budgeted for you to buy those in the past, correct?
So where is this, are they just budgeted?
Sounded like there was some reservation there. I mean, spending tax money versus student rate money, and still money that's just like for kids.
So, true.
But you don't think they'd be okay with us budgeting for certain program maintenance? I mean, do you think they would be opposed to that?
Well, I'm telling you, the tax benefit district, that means it's a great idea, but I don't represent the.
The norm.
The minority, or the majority of everyone here. I mean, we know that the board, you represent the tax benefit base, and you think that the taxpayer who supports that will start the account tomorrow? That, I would deal with that. I just don't, I know that some other people are not.
I get, I'm looking at it from a security standpoint, and I'm thinking that if all of our people are dressed in, in a. In a, in a, in an identifiable, you know, clothing, then it won't be all day, every day.
No, the main issue is all especially.
Well, I know one thing about it, if there are.
And athletes and, yeah, field trips.
I see it as an employee expense.
I don't, I don't, I don't see it as bad.
So to get a shirt for a chef? Maybe you're not that specific, right? Yes, sir.
I'm just saying, you know, when we, when we talk about, this conversation mostly revolves around, obviously, football doesn't buy me staff the shirts, and it's five hundred shirts. And I, I don't know if people think that that is some large number that we're spending, or it's a small amount, but it's, it's probably around four hundred, four hundred fifty dollars. Because we get the shirts for between four and four twenty-five per shirt. So we're not, we're not talking an absorbative amount of money, and as you and I talked, Mrs. Harsh, it, I know it sounds crazy. But whether it's the maintenance guys that help us out, or it's the custodians, or it's the staff members, a free t-shirt goes a long way. And it's, it, it's something that's so simple and so minor, but that t-shirt, I, I can't even tell you the, the pride and the morale that that one t-shirt brings to people in just getting it.
Well, it's, we're gonna, I mean, I think as long as it's identified, that's, I mean, that's all.
And I think your staff is probably split fifty-fifty on this t-shirt. And I think you got some staff that would love a t-shirt, and some staff is like, I'm not wearing a t-shirt, I want a polo. And so then you try to balance that scale accordingly, and go.
You got some staff who want a long purchase, you got some who are like, I'm gonna.
And, and my theory is, on it is, you can't complain about a free shirt.
Right, that's right. And we don't need to state.
Right.
A portion of the proceeds may go toward. That shirt. I mean, that's the only e- that's easier.
Then we run into the, so what I'm gonna, start naming, you gotta name it all.
Honestly, I think, I think that's easier than it's hard, because when you do start naming things, then for everything you don't name, you can never use it towards.
But the only thing is, why would we have to name anything? That, but the only thing you have to name is what doesn't go with kids. And I, I'm assuming that, other than those shirts, every other penny is gonna go with kids.
Well, I think because it's a slippery slope, I think they're, like, like, you guys have, um, dinner or something.
Absolutely.
And that comes out of activities, and that's what they're, that's what I mean.
Anytime we have a banquet for our teams, a softball banquet, volleyball banquet, whatever.
But it's, yeah, but the kids are at those things.
So are their parents though. So their parents did it, if they got food as well.
But don't parents pay? I, I was referring to like.
It depends on the, the progress. Football may fund everything for all the parents, they don't pay. A volleyball banquet, parents may pay three dollars, five dollars, something like that.
Everyone's.
It, or they may have, like, cheer and hams have their banquets off campus.
Can I ask them, why do we not have consistency there?
As far as banquets?
Yeah.
I think it, it depends on the making of the team and what people do. I, I, it's really easy to say, we should be consistent with the banquets yet. I think it's also hard because sometimes the coaches don't want to put any more burden on parents. Okay, everybody brings it. Seniors are gonna bring this, juniors are gonna bring this. Or, okay, we're gonna have catered from, um, saucy's is gonna come in and cater our, our banquet for us. I, everybody just has their own mix and match of what they do, and, and what, what seems to fit.
Well, the thing is.
I know cross-country is a problem.
Yeah.
Um, junior high basketball is a problem.
That's probably a cake.
Yeah, the basketball banquet, you say, you just get a cake.
Just a cake.
I mean, you know, during the afternoon, after lunch, and sort of get a cake, too. Everyone varies. Some years, some years when you're really successful, you may have a nice drawn-out banquet. Some years when you're not so successful, you may get in and get out. I mean, it's just. It does.
There's too many variables for, I mean, because you're getting into groups and organizations as well. That have.
Student council, our society, Spanish club, everything. You, you start really muddying the water, so to speak, on.
No, I mean, most, most charities have.
Do we need to table this, get t-shirts discussion?
Not all charities a hundred percent go to. Right. What's something, it's good, well, that they can, I mean.
Some go to administration.
Right. Exactly. And I think other nonprofits.
Oh, yeah, but it's not enough. It's not, it's just a habit.
So.
All right, I'm sure.
We have a lot of.
Well, I'm kinda excited.
Funders.
Is all of it, um, you have different, and you have a way to.
Is it just one?
Sometimes they're different, and you can't do a typical.
Is it just one t-shirt? When you first asked the question, you said, I thought one school, was it primary?
Right, it was intermediate that asked the question. Mr. Green now asked that question, and.
And it's just one fundraiser year for him, isn't it right?
Yeah.
He can.
He gets, he gets a shirt for each teacher, and I, I wanna say it's maybe ten percent.
So he's asking us as the board to do, do the.
Exactly.
This question is clear, it's on fundraiser money for staff or incentives.
Asking for all of the.
Sure, all the present, speaking up, up to me, from, you know, Andy Kelly, ask for clarity. Because it's, yeah, they, they know what to do. And I think I pretty well heard that, and, and kind of reached a consensus on, yes, you wanna use student fundraiser money to buy anything other than something for the kids, then you need to list on fundraiser form.
Yeah, I see the banquet, and even if the parents are in the, I still see that as, like, that is for the kids, and then you're. For the kids, I don't, I guess I don't, as long as the kids are involved in it, I don't.
I think it figures, the parents have taken the kids to every practice.
Right, I, I don't see that as a.
Bought all the stuff they needed outside of the.
I wouldn't.
All the high school staff members are involved in those children's lives. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not being, I'm not, I'm, I'm not trying to be rude or disrespectful. Please don't, don't underline that. I'm just.
That's nasty, that's nasty, or even dragging on a puppy, so.
No. He's not.
You know.
I would say, it, my.
Really, just like the intermediate, the fundraisers that they do, or the spring play, the teachers pay for all the food, they donate it all. And the prizes, the, the baskets that they, everybody bids on, the teachers have put them together and made them, and they made all the. Provided the profit to be made.
So there's kind of an issue, once, but here's the deal, when Scott takes that money from the spring play and dumps it into his activities account with his student fundraiser money, as you co-mingle those funds.
Well, he does, it gives you out what's left.
Right, the difficulty is when other activities don't, then you co-mingle funds, and they can't segregate and all act out of the system.
With so many times on the fundraisers, the teachers are participating in that, or donating things, if it's a trivia night, they put all the baskets together and. And, you know, so it's, it's coming out of my pocket as it is, you know?
I think the principal is struggling with this, with, with.
Yes, it will. So we table this and do a conversation with things. There will be some creative ideas that come out the next day or two. Or we could keep that together and then agree, let's leave it at this, we're not touching.
I would argue.
So you, they think the account's unraised, they get his fundraiser money, and that's.
We need back, meaning back again, seeing that.
That's one.
We are two weeks, two weeks, so.
I would just, you know, we put it on the agenda in the session.
Oh, I don't know. It's just that.
How about if we were to eliminate? How about if we were to try and move away from? I don't know how you're gonna do it.
I think one major thing is, there's probably a timeline to order, uniforms and clothes, football. We can move forward this year and think about, for instance.
We seem to worry that we've come up with, we're sitting there, that they, we're supposed to, I'm trying to say, I tried to call him, sorry, I tried to call him on my way here, he didn't answer.
So I think this is an, an item that we discussed earlier, for maturity, for next year. You know, we leave it as we for this year. And work towards a solution next year.
We just need to know what we want to do, so one more year, and then we can.
One more year, actually, now.
But then you need to start moving away from it.
But we need to start moving away, let's talk about that over this next year, I'm not gonna do that.
Research another alternative.
I think that's fair.
Indeed, because Kelly's not included that in the budget, she's presenting for two weeks, that we're gonna have a line item about staff shirts.
Right, right.
So I don't wanna have to come back next year and then have to budget them, and so our budget.
So right now, let's leave it all activities, and let's start working towards a different solution for next year.
Or if we need another.
It's not excessive.
We don't know, we don't know.
It is not excessive.
I've called you before, haven't I?
Yeah, absolutely, I've called before, and Ms. Harsh, she answered a question I asked just a minute ago, but you asked what other schools do in the class, and he's like, too. When I call Fess this, I ask them what they do, because I'm very impressed by head coach and their athletic director, they both said, oh my gosh, what an awesome idea we're doing this year. As far as buying the t-shirts for all the high school staff. So now they're stealing.
But it's coming out of.
Coming out of activity, yeah, yeah, same way. And I, I can, I tell you what I'll do. I will email all the county athletic directors to ask them what they do, and I'll put together a report, and I'll bring it to you guys, so you can look at it.
Well, and I know Fess, at math testing time, they buy t-shirts for all their teachers.
Yeah.
Cause I subbed in, I got one, and it talked about me being, I have a one.
So I.
But it was like a Superman hat, and it was to pump the kids up about math testing.
I would.
But Tina Tebow went around and handed out t-shirts for all the teachers.
And I don't have a problem doing that. I'll, I'll send that out to all the, I, I can, I'll send it to just the county, and then if you want me to explain that, I can send, send Willis as well. Because I have a max email list that I can, just kinda see what they're doing, and I'll put it all together, convince it down. I won't make it like a Dr. Isaacson report, I'll, I'll be like, oh, three guys.
Turn up the guy who's not here.
Yeah, I know, I know, hell, here, so that's fine. And then I'll, I'll try to get it to you guys by July or August. I'll work this something on it, okay?
Alright, so standard practice this year, we'll do what we did last year.
Yep, and I'll further notice.
I'm, I'm gonna make a comment, because I'm not gonna mention recognition dinner. My very first recognition dinner, there were like two weeks and all that, and I sat there thinking, I wonder where all this comes from. Now, this year, all of that was gone, and it was gift cards, except, people still got excited about, you know, getting those things, and, well, some people didn't beg, and obviously, but. Um, to me, this was more realistic than sending the money on DVD. And not that that wasn't nice, but, you know, I did sit there and I wondered, well, you know, someone's got the taste.
Which recognition?
The Florida recognition.
I mean, Phil, if Dan was talking, or the one, you know, the one reason, I was the same way, I mean, the prizes were just phenomenal. They used to get a lot of things donated, and, you know, I, I was the same way, I talked to God, sure, it was just. They went to all kinds of vendors, and people within the community, and those things were donated.
Right.
So it wasn't like it was coming out. Were there other questions about this? Okay. So I'm a motion that you're a hard worker. Secondary. All in favor? Very good.
I will not introduce a law, after that, um, ladies, uh. So I told her, if you want to staff a, a, my daughter's time, go, you're welcome to do go. If there's four of us, we will not talk to any school business.
Um, if you haven't talked to Ben Day and know about the conference in the fall, that's anybody, you need to let her know that, yes, I wanna go and.
She's registering on Monday.
I wanna go.
Okay.
So write that down, and I will.
Now, the question is, do you want to stand a day, do you need a room? Do you need her to get you a room?
A hotel room or the.
Number. And I, my judgment is, my boy had it, she can get, they can always be canceled.
Go ahead.
Because there are.
If I'll be traveling, I don't know where I'm traveling from. For it's a happy, I mean, I put me in a room, and you remember, traveling.